All right. I'll call the city council work session to order. For the record, today is Wednesday, May 18th, 2022, and it is 4:32 PM. Our first order of business will be roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burton. Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison is not with us tonight.
Next item of agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Borton.
No changes to the agenda, so I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Motion second to adopt the agenda with no changes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, the agenda is adopted. Next item is the consent agenda. Councilman Borton.
President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as published for the president to sign and clerk to attest.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. There weren't any items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move to department commission reports. First up is information technology and who's doing the presenting on that? Is that Doug? Doug Green, come on up.
Council President and members of the council, thanks for letting me come chat with you today. I bet you don't often get to play a game in city council, but we're going to start with a little game. This is an aerial photo of downtown City of Meridian. The game is, tell me what's missing. That's great. Oh, man.
Well, maybe I'm talking to myself, Dean.
He might be, you know, it's like a game on the spot. All right. I won't dwell on it too long, but I will move along here. Here is a more recent photo. I heard Keller, I heard the loss. This is obviously not as new as what's out there right now. So obviously you can see a lot of change. And that's basically why I'm here. I'm just here to inform you about a change we're making to how often we acquire our aerial imagery that is heavily used by city staff and also citizens in our mapping systems. We acquire this through the Community Planning Association of Southwest Idaho, a collaborative pooled funded project. We typically do it every three years, but there's been a increasing demand for us to get that more often. Well, the RFP RFQ process is very hefty on them. They came up with a plan to put something into the works that would allow a multi-year agreement, but that means there needs to be a product every year. So what that meant for those participating is we're now getting aerial imagery every year, which is a big jump from the three. But at the same time, I think that the previous graphic illustrated the need. We have a lot of change in our area. It's definitely justified and it's just something that's heavily used, you know? If you can, you know, take a look at a map versus going out on site, it's a lot more efficient for our staff and those kinds of things. We have agreed to contribute 7,000 a year. We're putting that into the base budget. So I'm not coming to you with a budget request or anything like that, but it was asked that we come and let you know of that change. Are there any questions?
Do I have to ask permission from myself to speak? How that works? Anyway, Doug had a question. I was just curious, like you showed those, the photograph there, when you have certain areas, is that something you order? Or are they taking photographs once a year of the all of Meridian? Just curious how that process works.
Yeah, this product that we're talking about is a high-quality entire valley leaf-off aerial photo. So it's like what we call an archival historical document essentially of the entire area. It's something we couldn't get with just drones for that whole area, leaf-off, that kind of quality, if that makes any sense. For specific areas, yes, we can capture that with drones for a visual, for a presentation, or for an analysis or planning project. But for the whole city, it's nearly impossible to get at this stage with, well, not nearly impossible. It's not as cost-effective to get with drones. How about that?
Thank you. Yeah. Other questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Perrow.
What, so $7,000 a year going into the budget, what is the current expenditure for the every three years?
Every three, it has been a little different. The last time you'll know it was more because we had to update this. It's called a digital terrain model. They had to fly with LiDAR to capture the elevation of everything so that it makes it easier to stitch that photo together. They'll have to do that every so often as things change. But usually, we have contributed. I was going to say 13, but I was a little low. 10 to 12 every three years.
Mr. President.
Yes, not a question, but it's rare that we get Doug up here. And so I just wanted to call the council's attention. I don't, I'm sure you all heard from members of the public, but last week the city produced a potential district map for city councils with a great press release with an interactive map. And I heard from a ton of folks in the public how much they appreciated that. And that was largely led by Doug and the IT team and Stephanie. And so just wanted to let you all know, like, I think that's a really important step in educating our community. And just want to thank you in front of everybody. I appreciate your hard work. You'll be missed.
Thank you. I don't know what to say, but thanks. It's a collaborative effort, you know? You put, you put something out there and then get everybody's feedback and it produces what you saw, so.
Thanks for that feedback, Councilman Cavanagh. Yeah. Anything else? All right, great.
Thank you very much.
All right, up next, we have a community center feasibility update. My Parks and Recreation Department, Steve, I guess you're going to kick things off?
I'm going to kick things off and then turn things over to Tom Deal here in a couple of minutes. But I wanted to start off by just saying, last week I was here addressing some questions about the community center and classes and which ones had homes and which ones didn't. At that time, I promised I'd be back next week, today, to give an update on the overall community center feasibility study. Our consultants are in town this week. We have an open house tomorrow night for the master plan, but wanted to take advantage of their presence. They just flew in a few hours ago, but they're here and wanted to give you an update on the community center feasibility study process. The presentation that you'll see is based on feedback that we received from you through the interviews that we held about six weeks ago. Once we get direction from you on the concepts, basically looking, focusing on the mix of uses, the general room types and approximate sizes, that they will begin the harder work of, you know, the cost pro formas and those detailed parts of the feasibility study. But we've got to agree first on a concept to base that on. So this presentation really is an interim check-in with you, just to make sure we're on the right track before we take it to the public in an open house type, type setting. No formal action is needed tonight. However, we are hoping for some general direction if council is comfortable with this, moving forward to a public presentation part of the process as a next step. So with that, if unless you have any questions for me, I'm going to turn this over to Tom Deal with green play.
Hey, council, any questions before Steve steps away? All right, Tom, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. President and council members, thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. Basically, we're doing a community center feasibility study. We've just given you some bullet points of the study. We're trying to develop the appropriate mix of programs and amenities, give you a projection for a range of construction costs, give you the potential cost recovery once one is designed and built to operate, and give you recommendations whether you could consider phasing this. And probably the biggest part of what we're doing at this stage is making sure we have the necessary building elements. As far as a community center or a feasibility study, it's very important to understand that, you know, there's many different things that go into the development of this project. It is a planning document and there aren't design absolutes at this point. So the concepts we're going to show you, we still would anticipate when you actually go to build will be tweaked and changed. That all comes during a later process. The community center vision that we've been working with Steve and his team and yourselves and members of the community is to make sure that we're developing something that would be for all ages and abilities, so it would be inclusive, that it would be a community destination, that it would be cost-effective, family-focused, and would provide an opportunity to explore recreation and wellness. And we heard from all of you how important it was that it would be sustainable and that there was a potential to either expand upon it or build it in phases. So we've taken that vision and that's what we've been working with. We worked very hard with Steve and his team to develop a definition of a community center. And I think you saw this in your packet before. I won't read through all of it, but basically we've developed what Meridian's stance of a community center is, the definition. And at the end, I can come back to this if you have any questions, but we've used this definition to develop the concepts I'm about to show you. Where we are in our stage of our study right now, we're in the conceptual and amenities site program development and our initial findings part of our study. We've done public engagement as part of the master plan, as well as some specific focus groups and the meetings that we had with all of you that were specific to the community center. We were on site back in November. We held six focus groups with 39 participants. It helped us develop our survey. We had interviews with 10 elected officials. We had stakeholder interviews. We interviewed the staff. We did a SWOT analysis. We've briefed the Park and Recreation Commission previously. And then we had 690 needs assessment surveys come back. And we asked the same questions in the needs assessment related to the community center that were asked during your last master plan. I'm going to show you two or three key slides from the survey. There was a need for, we asked the question whether there was any future need for indoor and outdoor facilities. And if you see here, the orange is the 2020, the 2021 survey results, and the blue is the 2015. And you can see that the community center actually increased from 3.7 out of a 5 to 3.9. So that has stayed very high on the radar. As far as the amenities that people were looking for in a community center, here we're showing you the invitation survey, the open link, and then the combination overall and the things that rose to the top, the outdoor plaza, activity space, indoor activity space and event space, fitness wellness space, community education classrooms in a drop-in area. And we've confirmed those amenities with the community in our meetings with the staff and again with you during our discussions about six weeks ago. Finally, we also asked about programs and services that the community would desire at a, at a new community center. And you can see that there were programs for children rated very high, programs for seniors, community education classes, programs for teens. So we took all of this in the health and wellness and made sure that we included this in our thinking. I've listed here the recurring themes that we took away from our meetings with all of you. That the park and recreation programs would be the priority in a community center, to have an art and crafts room, fitness wellness room, instructional kitchen, two to three classrooms, conference room, and some flexible divisible space. We asked you about the potential budget that we should be trying to be looking at. And our takeaway from our conversations with you was somewhere in the 12 to 15 million dollar range and that it should be plus or minus 20,000 square feet with the 17,000 square foot minimum. We also asked you what were some of your go and no-go thoughts, things that you must have or must not have. And our biggest takeaway there was that we should integrate art into the facility, but not have a separate art gallery. We asked about locations and you identified three locations that we should be looking at. The city hall location, the park shop, and then a generic property, just to give you a concept that could go pretty much anywhere. And then you all mentioned to us that we should think long-term to make sure that what we're putting together is something that would meet your needs now and into the future. So we developed three concepts, one for the city hall location, one for the park shop and, and a generic site. Each concept contains similar elements. Every concept has a main lobby, multipurpose classrooms, offices and workstations, general storage that's sufficient for the building, arts and craft rooms, conference rooms, instructional kitchen, some form of outdoor grass or turf area that could allow for the expansion of programs right outside, a subdivisible flex room, fitness and wellness space, and then the necessary facility and support spaces. The only difference you're going to see in the concepts, the major difference is the city hall concept is a two-story facility because of cold. The other two facilities were drawn as one-story facilities. And all three locations that we've developed concepts for would operate very similarly. So this is the, the concept that's been developed for city hall. You can see that we've located it in front of city hall. It's got frontage on North Main Street and it's adjacent to East Broadway Ave. It's two stories. It has all of the elements that we, we've talked about. If you have questions, I can take them on this, or I can go to each of the concepts and then we can come back. Just keep moving. Okay. The second concept we're showing is the park shop. We're showing a one-story facility there with all of the same amenities. We are showing some parking that's being added there. We show you a turf area again. And then the third concept is our generic concept that does show some onsite parking, all of the same amenities and spaces. Each one of the, the designs is very similar in square footage. Each of the amenities and spaces are the same square footage. As far as our study goes, we will come back if we get approval and show these concepts to the community and get feedback. That'll be the second part of the findings and conceptual feedback. And then we'll draft our report. Our report will include probable operating costs, cost recovery, and a probable range of construction costs. That's our presentation. I'd like to ask if you have any questions and, and try to field them.
Council, any questions?
Mr. President.
Councilman Borton.
Tom, what do you mean when you use the word sustainable?
Sustainable from the standpoint financially and sustainable in the way that it's built from a, like a LEED certified sustainable and sustainable from an operations, all three of those.
Maybe it is to be fleshed out. I'm not sure really what that means, though. Like sustainable financial making, it operates net zero.
It operates at the cost recovery that we're recommended to, to use when we develop the budget. So whatever that cost recovery number is, that it can feasibly operate in that manner. And from a environmental sustainability, it's using the right materials and the right construction.
Something beyond normal construction. I mean, like a LEED certified type additional.
It's something that would be considered.
Mr. President.
Good, Councilman Borton.
One other question, I guess, or a comment to your points of goods and bads. One of the considerations that is probably already in your, in your wheelhouse is avoiding opportunities for this to directly compete with private businesses or duplicate services.
Mm-hmm.
Exist in our community. Gym space may be one of the more classic examples. Pools very well might be as well. At what stage in the process is that factored in to assess and then decide whether or not some duplication of services provided by the private sector still would be appropriate?
We've already looked at that. And if you look at the amenities that we're proposing, there is not a gymnasium. There's not an aquatic center. There is a, a fitness wellness space that's not meant to have, you know, weight equipment and, and all of that. It's for the department to be able to do the programming that they currently do now, like, you know, yoga classes and small group exercise. And we look at those as being leaders for other businesses. It's actually, it's their entry level classes. They're not going to be able to offer, you know, Taekwondo, entry level to black belt and anything like that. So it's, it's getting a person who's not doing anything, whetting their appetite. And then hopefully they would go out into the community and take it to the next level.
The question of, of conference rooms is that it's not something analogous to what a chamber of commerce would do. It's something different.
It's a conference room more so for the staff to be able to have a meeting, or it's not meant to be a rentable meeting space that.
One of the comments that we heard, the original concept that we had two months ago had multiple conference rooms. One of the things we heard was take it down to one. So the concepts that we have have a single that can be used for, you know, whatever a conference room might be used for. We did hear some interest in making them available to the Chamber of Commerce or the business community for whatever type of need might be there. I think we're open to that. So I guess we're just open a direction either way. Use it for ourselves only, make it available to the chamber, do, don't. But we've, we've cut it back from multiple to a single one.
And we'll update our slide.
I also think it's probably fair to make a comment on the sustainability question. On the cost recovery side, I would just put out there now that we're not expecting this to be net zero or break even. We do expect that we will have some cost recovery, but it'll be, you know, probably a small portion of the, of the entire cost. So I think just in the, for fairness, just put that out there now. We'll see what the pro forma says we might bring in, but it'll be a, it'll be a portion.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you. Could you go to the slide that shows the, the suggestion for the parks facility? There we go. Was there any thought to possibly making that two-story as well and, and creating some additional turf area or additional plaza space? I don't, I don't know exactly. I mean, you, you know, it's hard to tell what the square footage will be of those two locations, but as a ratio to the building, it seems like maybe they're, they're not a prominent part of the project.
I think we talked about that. We were making sure we were leaving room for the additional future potential job building that you see drawn there. And we were adding parking. Steve, I don't think that I have a, I think we're just keeping them both.
Yeah, I think we want a single story and a two-story option. I don't know that we're, you know, if we were to build here, that it must be single story. If we decide we want two-story, it can be. Two-story constructions, more costly. You have to have elevators, stairwells, more facilities. So it'll be, it'll be a little less expensive if we do single story. But you're right that if we do go two-story, if we determine, hey, you know, those additional 20 parking spaces or the additional turf area or whatever are really valuable, we could go two-story and use the additional space in that way. Some of that, those decisions can come even post-feasibility study when we get into design development and construction documents, you know, this next winter.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strater.
Oh, please don't go far, Steve. So I'm curious on the, I've looked at the different, I guess, concepts. I was curious on one where it's co-located with city hall, what the thought process was in terms of the location of a building footprint? Why that corner specifically as opposed to the other parking lot? And then where there obviously would be a lot of moving parts that have to line up with a future parking structure. Is there any update on the thinking of how that would come together?
Okay, let me start with the location. We do think that, we looked at a couple of different options, location-wise. We thought addressing the corner was the strongest and the, the best concept. If council has feedback about that, we'd love to hear it. The south parking lot, if you'll remember, the city only owns half of that. The railroad owns the other half. So you got to cut that area in half. So it'd be really long and narrow if we tried to put it in that space. There is some additional space yet in there and plus it's the closest, you can see the future parking structure kind of noted with the project across the street with Galena. We have had an initial conversation with them that they're willing to, you know, work with us and that they're anticipate being on a similar timeline, but there's nothing inked, there's nothing formal. It's just a conversation at this point that we hope to explore partnership with them for parking.
Thank you.
Follow-up quickly on Steve's comment about the long and narrow. We looked at that here as well. And it, it just changes the functionality of the building and, and the flow of it. Yeah, it's like going into a storage.
Makes sense. Thanks.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you. I, I had hoped that the plaza space and when the, when this proposed design came about, that it would integrate with the plaza in front of city hall. And it doesn't seem like it's doing that. So I'm curious if you ran any scenarios where the plaza space was used altogether? That feels to me like it'd be more fluid. Maybe there's an intention that they are supposed to act completely separately from one another, but I got the impression that the desire was to tie into city hall.
We ran many different scenarios and when we did that, the building moved away from, yeah, I couldn't tell north or east or west, sorry, from Main Street too far. And then there was space left in front. And I think this was the one that was chosen to show you.
Yeah, I think the other thing that I'd add is we feel the same way about wanting to integrate because we, we would want to integrate with and address that. But I just don't think we know enough yet for how that will be designed. Do we? It, will that drive aisle and some handicap accessible parking remain on site there? Will it become plaza? I think there are, there are things that will come through design development as we refine this concept to figure out, it needs to be better connected than just a building with a drive aisle between it and then a separate plaza. I will totally agree with you there. I just don't know that we've done enough refinement yet on that through, on that concept. I think once we get an architect involved, we'll actually have a stronger vision for how to do that. Right now, we're mainly focused on the structure itself, but I know as we, the site planning evolves, that's got to be better addressed and better connected.
And as part of a feasibility study, it's really kind of taking a block and setting it on the space and seeing if it, you know, is that space big enough for how big of a space do you need, so?
One of the things we did do just recently to explore it, because we were worried about that disconnect as well, was we shifted the building closer to the existing plaza, but it made the space between the building and Main Street quite awkward. And so I think it's probably better to address Main Street and then figure out how to integrate. kind of that back area with the additional lawn space, additional plaza, connect the two, figure out how the, the, the parking is going to work, et cetera. So.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Pro.
I don't know if this is the appropriate method in which to figure this out. Maybe this comes later on down the road, but since we have these, these other significant projects coming in in the next four or five years, I have a lot of concerns about the stress that it's going to put on Main Street and Broadway. And that intersection is not made to have that many vehicles coming through it. So I don't know if that was a part of the assessment or not, or if that's something that is considered down the road. So I just wanted to share those thoughts that, that for me is a very big factor in, in relationship to choosing the City Hall location. Cause at this time, there's, there's no plans to expand that to my knowledge. The other thing I wanted to add is more of a comment than a question, and that is that I, I'm personally not comfortable with even discussing financial decisions regarding the City Hall location until we have inked some sort of agreement on the parking structure. I, I just wouldn't be in favor of this location unless that was done. So I don't know how much the consulting firm is a part of that or not, but I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
We, we were directed to look at these three sites and develop concepts specifically. So that's how they were chosen. We didn't do a really deep dive on traffic at this point. That would be done during your next stage, if that's the site that's chosen. And then to answer your second question, I think, you know, whether parking is there or not, that would also come during the, the next stage.
Council, any more questions? And Steve, just to recap, you, you're going to want feedback from council and if it's now, but see future.
We, we would just ask for concurrence from council. I don't, you can decide whether it's just a knot of heads or if emotion, but it doesn't have to be emotion. We're not asking for formal approval, but we do want to know if council is comfortable with us taking these concepts and this information forward into the study to develop the cost performance, to go to the public meetings, et cetera. So that is my question to council and we'll like to know if you're comfortable with us moving forward.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'm not real excited about us moving forward until we've got a cost recovery model that we're adopting. Twelve to fifteen million dollars is a lot of money. And we've got a lot of needs in our city, particularly related to emergency services, additional fire stations, a police substation. I think until we understand how the, how this building is going to pay whatever little percentage it will of itself. I, I don't think it's an appropriate decision for us to move forward until we've got those answers.
Mr. President and Councilman Cavanagh, I, I think part of the question is, can we move forward into a cost recovery development? Cause that, that is part of the next step. So I'm not sure.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Steve, I'm under the impression that we're doing a, a department wide cost recovery study. Correct?
Yes.
Does that plan or that study not contemplate how we would offer classes and programs? I mean, I, I hear you say that you think this will recover a very small amount. And I'm, I guess I'm guessing, I, I need to know what that's based on.
That is based on me knowing what existing classes and programs, you know, bring in. We, we basically look to recover our administrative costs for, with our cost split with the existing contracted instructors. It's not a big revenue generator for us. So it's just based on knowing what we bring in today. The, I guess maybe I'll let Art talk about how this may inter, interface with the, the full cost recovery process. Cause he's been through that more than I have.
If you could give your name for the record, please.
Yes, no, no problem. I'm Art Thatcher. I'm a manager with Barry Dunn. And as where we are in this stage is that before we can get to any kind of a cost recovery or any kind of a financing performer or any of that, we need to know the building elements. We need to be able to know what, what we can offer in that space, when it's going to operate in those things. And so what we're asking is, can we take this, the, the space concepts to the public? And get them to validate that these are the right space. These are the spaces that they, they want and that they would like. And from there, then we, then we will look at the, the operating. So hours of operations, personnel, those things. And then we will also look at potentials for programming, number of classes, what the, the, the ranges of those classes will be. And, and that will be the face where, the place where we'll be able to, to come more towards that cost recovery. And so what the cost recovery study that we're doing now is providing is it's placing those programs that potentially will be offered in the community center on the pyramid as to where the community sees them in, in the cost recovery pyramid.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I appreciate that. Maybe it may be a two-part question. Part one, when you go out then to the public, are you asking the public, hey, are you, are you willing to spend fifteen million dollars on this? I understand you want a, a kitchen facility or you want arts and crafts space, but do you want it enough to spend fifteen million dollars on it?
So a, as, as part of the master plan, we did ask about funding that the, that the community was, was, was willing to, to consider. And then also as part of this, we will also through the presentation say, this is, this is what the estimated cost of this square footage building is. That twelve to fifteen million. And yes, we will ask them, is that something that you're willing to, to support?
Mr. Mayor, then maybe just one additional.
Go ahead.
Art, you guys, you guys are the, the best in the business. I mean, you guys are the subject matter experts. Help us understand ballpark, we spend fifteen million dollars on this. What percentage, it sounds like we won't recover anything for our capital. And it's just a matter of trying to break even on the programming. I mean, is that what we should realistically expect?
In, and, and Tom can talk a little bit as, as well. I, in my experience, both as an operator and also as a consultant, you're not going to recover your capital investment. You will recover a percentage of your operating.
Any other questions? I, I, I think we're, Councilman Cavanagh, I was thinking as you're going through that, it's, it's kind of like our park facilities. You know, do we recover costs? If there's programs and different things, you know, we're not going to pay back parks. It's not going to be, and it, it is a capital outlay that is very expensive. And I think, you know, we need to rightly question those things and try to make the determination, is that necessary? And if so, what is the timing? What does that look like? But I think for our next steps is do we go forward to get additional information? We're not making the final decision, but do we get more information to decide, okay, where are we? And do we, then we'll be faced with another choice, so. One of those, of those processes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I, I agree. And I think the reason why I'm conflicted on this is I think that, that on the surface is, is a really good plan. I guess if, if we had fifteen million dollars, I'd rather spend it on park space where our whole community can take advantage of this. This is essentially building a capital infrastructure that people who are paying in addition to the class, recovering the cost of the class in a building that the taxpayers have subsidized. And that, and that's the part that I'm, I'm wrestling with. I'd rather us spend those dollars on playgrounds or green space that our whole community can take advantage of without having to pay extra to, to use it.
Councilwoman Pro.
Well, I, I guess I don't see this that different than, you know, we're spending a significant amount on a golf course and we had fewer public input sessions on that than we have on this. In addition, golf course is going to charge people to play there. Same thing with the pool, they're against going to charge people to be there. So I don't, I don't like from a, just how is that different than the, and to me, the community center serves a lot more people than the golf course or the pool.
Mr. President, just to respond to that, I, I agree with you a hundred percent about the golf course. The difference is we own the golf course. The city, the city owned the golf course long before I was on the council. And I think we have an obligation to have that course run efficiently. The question for the city was, do we want to spend seventeen million dollars to build a public golf course? I'd probably be saying no to that as well. So it's, I, I look at them differently because we have ownership of that course. We have an obligation to invest to keep it operating efficiently.
So council, I don't know if we want to give a thumbs up to move forward type of thing. I mean, Councilwoman Pro raises some good points about, you know, the location here at City Hall. But notwithstanding, should we still find out the next step in details for all three facilities? And then we can continue forward. Is that the desire of the council? I see heads nodding kinda. Councilwoman Pro, uh, Strater, sorry.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, I think, look, I think getting more information is a really important step as we move through this. I think those are valid concerns. Like I want to reflect that back. I think those are valid concerns. I think the cost is going to be the biggest hurdle as we step through this and looking at the different options. I think any large city that's really vibrant has a good parks and recreation program and is well supported by facilities that help foster that. I don't have a philosophical issue with it, but I do think it's important that the mix of programming and what we're offering in this facility is something that's really accessible to the whole city. Like one piece of feedback that I have is we're hearing how important it is to have plaza space or green space. And so that's why I think Councilwoman Perot is also asking the question of how would this, if it were located downtown, for example, how would this integrate with the City Hall Plaza and maybe make better use of the space that we do have? And could people who are now, we're going to have a huge population downtown, how can we activate this so people are all using it? Like, that's the most important thing to me is that it's something that the whole city can use. You know, granted, the parks and recreation programs, people will be paying for those potentially at different rates will be subsidizing though, depending on where they land on the pyramid, right? So I feel like we have a lot to step through. Got some feedback, I'm okay with moving forward, but I think it's an important, like I think Councilman Cavanagh brings up an important point. I don't think it's okay to just have something that's inaccessible to everybody in the city. It needs to be something that the whole city can use in varying degrees.
Councilman Byrne. I, I, thank you, Mr. President. I, for me, I just want an opportunity to make an educated decision. And without information in front of us, it's, it's impossible to make an educated decision. I'd appreciate more information and, and I'm definitely in support in having this continue.
I think, I think that's what we're asking is can we take these concepts and the spaces? Get the community to validate that so that we can then provide that, that additional information for you.
All right. I, I think we got, got a next step, move forward and then we'll take it from there. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next up on the agenda is a presentation by Idaho Housing and Finance. And as they're coming up, you know, we've had a series of, I call them educational sessions, if you will, as, as we try to deal with affordable housing and, and housing projects and just the state of the economy. Where we're finding it's, it's a complex subject and we need to become better educated. So appreciate Jack and Rihanna being here today to, to help us in that process. And hopefully we can learn a few things. So introduce yourself for the record and then we'll move forward.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Mayor, and council members. I'm Rhiannon Avery and this is Mr. Jack Hawkins and we are with Idaho Housing and Finance Association. We are so pleased to be able to spend some time with you talking about probably one of the more important tools when it comes to the development of attainable housing in building off your April nineteenth presentation. And so in that, Mr. Hood kind of put it into four L's, the lumber, the labor, the laws and the land. Well, we're going to add one more L to that for you, just to keep the, the flow. And we're going to talk about leverage. And when we think about leverage, leverage is really all of the parts and pieces that we do really, really well to help, there we go, um, to bring projects to life. And as we heard in listening to that presentation in preparation for today, that, that constant theme of we can't do this by ourselves. Idaho Housing and Finance cannot do it by ourselves. And so again, this leverage of what we do really, really well to reduce that cost that we're passing on to a tenant or a single family homeowner, that's really what we're looking at. And so through this presentation, what we're going to give you are some different examples. No two communities are the same, no two projects are the same. But hopefully this will give you a high level overview of what are tax credits? How do they help? And then some real life examples. At the conclusion, we're, oh, uh, here to answer some questions. And then any questions around the home investment partnerships program, which is another entitlement program through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Jack Hawkins.
Thank you, Rhiannon. Again, my name's Jack Hawkins. I am the project finance manager and credit approval officer for Idaho Housing. I'm the lone guy. So as, as Rhiannon was mentioning, a lot of what we do is we're the allocating agency for the state of Idaho. So on an annual basis, Treasury will give us an allotment of, of tax credits for, for the state. And then we're supposed to distribute those throughout the state on a hopefully equitable manner. For example, we have, there's really two types of tax credit projects. There's the, still. Gotcha. There's a nine percent tax credit, which is the actual competitive round that you'll hear about. So on, in, in August of each year, we actually go out and solicit applications from the whole state to allocate the, the tax credits. Those are limited. For example, this last year, we received about four point nine million in tax credits. We had some carryovers, which means projects that didn't work, they gave us the tax credits back. So we're going to add that to, so we'll have about six point four million in tax credits. Do you equate that into actual cash dollars? It's about fifty four point eight million dollars. And just, I don't want to get too into the weeds, but, but basically tax credits are, are just that. Is, you know, Wells Fargo, a US bank, Raymond James will come in and buy those tax credits either for themselves or clients. And it's really equity money into the project. And that's what allows these projects to be able to cash flow on a, for low income families. Cause they're, they're paying less than fair market value. Uh, anywhere from thirty percent average median income, AMI, up to about sixty percent. Can't really kept go any higher than that for that portion of the tax credit. And you can have market rate units within the project. And, and a lot of them will also have a manager's unit, but that kind of gives you an idea of what the nine percent are. Four percent are a non-competitive bond round. That you don't get as much equity involved. So you have larger projects, you'll have more market rate in there. But it's, you, we, we actually can allocate those anytime we want. Or the state. Just say the, the projects have to be used a thirty year restricted period, meaning they have to be affordable for thirty years. And actually, most of ours are forty years.
Mr. President, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, Councilwoman Strater, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks a lot, Jack and Rhiannon. I just wanted to ask while you're talking about how these are structured, before we get into the examples, sort of some structuring questions. I was curious about, um, as you're structuring these, what the challenges are in terms of how this intersects with the use of CDBG funds. And, you know, I had had a discussion with someone earlier who said it was important for those to be structured as loans. And I believe our program may not be set up that way. I just wanted to understand, you know, to make these work with a city's use of CDBG funds, how, how would that work? What are the challenges or things that have to be done to make that work?
So Rhiannon is more of the CDBG guru than I am. But, but, but in, in a project, you're going to find, I would say at least three sources of financing could be CDBG, could be tax credits, could be loans, could be what we talked about home, housing trust fund, which are, are HUD. But with a CDBG, a lot of the reason why you want to have it as a loan is because if it's a grant, it actually brings down what they call the eligible basis within the project, which then affects the tax credits. And again, you want as many tax credits in the project, because that is, again, that is equity. It's not debt. So it, it brings down the debt service of, of that project.
If I can, if I can just chat a little bit about it, just so I, I understand. So the, it's actually.
If I can, if I can just chat a little bit about it, just so I, I understand. So the, it's actually a tax issue, it sounds like, because your, the basis changes. And so what you're saying is that the CBPG funds need to be structured as a loan that would be forgiven ultimately by the city? Is that how it would be, if we were to structure it as a loan, how would that work?
Yeah. And that, and that's what you really want to do is, is, as long as it's a loan, it can be like a due on sale. So we have what they call Housing Trust Fund, uh, and it's for the, what they call extremely low income families. And that's 30% AMI. So what we do is we, we make it as a loan and it's just a due on sale, zero percent interest. And so probably at the end of the 30 years, we're just going to grant it. But that's, that's what we do with those.
Councilmember Strater, that's, as he explained, it's the eligible tax basis. And so even if you call it a forgivable loan, knowing that really the city's intent is to grant the money to the project, you're still sitting up as a forgivable loan. So that developer has the full eligibility for that tax basis for their project.
Got it. So maybe just one housekeeping item. I would really like for the finance department and the CBDG, um, community development folks to get together internally and discuss if we have prohibitions on organizing our CBDG funds as forgivable loans and why we couldn't try to find a way to do that. Um, I'm just concerned that we're not using that potential source of financing for your projects. And we're basically taking that off the table with how we're set up right now. This has been helpful. Thanks.
And I would say that a, a number of, uh, projects that are in entitlement cities like Meridian, uh, do have CBPG funds within the project. So it's, it's common within the state.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Pearl?
On that note, since CBPG funds are federal dollars, is, is there not a limitation then that the city, that, that they could not be forgivable or repaid? Uh, because they will, they will come in a different fiscal year than, so that I think there's limitations to a CBPG on how long those funds, you know, when, how, how long we have to spend those funds, or that the applicant has to spend those funds, and that I don't think those funds can be returned to the city in a forgivable manner or repay to the city because they're federal dollars and they have reporting limitations. But I'm not sure.
A lot of it comes down to how your CBPG program is setting itself up. Um, there are, there are some municipalities who will simply do the forgivable loan because, again, their intent is never to have the money come back. They wanted to leverage what their CBPG resources into that project. There are other municipalities that do make it a loan program and expect an annual payment. So it really comes down to how the CBPG entitlement community is wishing to set up those, those programs and payments.
Okay. Continue?
Uh, then we thought we'd just go over a few projects that, that, that we've been involved with over the, uh, the last few years. First one is La Sriesa. It's over in Caldwell. Uh, it's an affordable senior housing, uh, project, 48 units. Forty of them are affordable. So that's the tax credits, uh, provided that. Again, the, the AMI is our 30% to 60% area, of course, except for the, uh, market rate. This project, uh, closed in, and to, uh, or the loan closed in 2019, completed in 2020. And as you can see, there's some other debt. And, and like I mentioned, there's always a lot of other sources involved. Uh, we had the, the home debt, which is part of our program. Uh, it's a subordinate debt to the primary, the permanent lender. Uh, and that's, that's common knowledge. Uh, sometimes the payments are, you know, a monthly payment. Sometimes they're an annual payment. Sometimes they're a cash flow payment. And for example, on the home debt of, of a million dollars, we had seven units that were part of that. And then the, the tax credit were the additional units in that.
Can I ask a question on, as we got this slide up, like land donation, was that from the city? Was that from their development corporation?
It was actually, it was, it was the, the owner, uh, donated that portion of it. So it, he said, okay, I, I don't remember what the dollars were, but if it, you know, if it appraised 900,000, basically he sold it to the development for 700,000. So that was the, the developer or the, the land donation in that.
And then, Jack, the nonprofit contribution. I mean, is that an actual organization or is that a city or somebody who puts in money into that?
Yeah. So this, this was Northwest Integrity, uh, actually had money. Uh, they're a nonprofit that does a lot of, uh, developments. Uh, they're associated with, I don't know if you know Tom Manchek or not, but it's, it's part of his group. So they actually made a, a donation to that.
Thank you.
Okay. And then you can kind of see the amenity package, you know. Uh, they're usually fairly similar, you know, air conditionings, washer dryers, playgrounds, um, laundry facilities. Sometimes you'll see community centers, carports. Um, and so, um, that's kind of the amenities for this, that project. Uh, the springs, which is, um, I don't know a lot about. It was, it was prior to my, uh, coming on to IHFA, but it's actually up in McCall, uh, affordable family, um, project, 36 total units, very too affordable for market. Uh, this was a tax credit, what they call a tax credit only project. So there wasn't any other, um, uh, like home funds or, um, a, any other IHFA funds. Um, so as you can see, there was a USDA perm loan on there for the million three tax credit equity comes in. And then, uh, and again, another land donation in Valley County. Any package, again, fairly similar, uh, as, as, uh, La Sriesa's. Nothing really too much different there. Dare Manor, uh, is in downtown Boise on, uh, Fairview. If you know where that is, it's kind of down by the, I always call it the red line downtowner, but it's whatever, whatever it's called now. Um, it's actually one of the larger projects that we've done recently. A hundred and thirty-four units, a hundred and twenty of them were affordable, 13 were market. This was actually one of the 4% bond projects that we, that I had mentioned. It was new construction, uh, in there. As you can see, quite a few different sources of, of financing. City of Boise put in, uh, not only home funds, but also, uh, they had contributions. I believe they were, um, permits and they, they, they discounted a lot of other things. Uh, it's actually leased land the city owns. So they, the million 499 is, uh, the value of the property that the city donated. And then the one that kind of makes me laugh is the NOI during the lease up. That's, that's one of the things that kind of made me always giggle when we're putting that together. But, uh, and then the developer contribution really is the developer will make a 15% or up to a 15% developer fee on it. And sometime it's deferred. And so with this one, it's, it's basically that million six is a deferred developer fee that can be paid over the next 12 years based on cash flow of the project. Again, another amenity package, again, uh, very similar. This one has a business center, little picnic area. So it's, uh, again, similar in nature to the, the, the last couple. And then, um, I believe it's the last one is New Path, which is about a walk and a half away, um, from, from Adair. This is the transitional housing project, uh, that we, that we worked on. It's, uh, forty, total 41 units, forty of it is, uh, affordable for, uh, a transitional homeless population. Uh, one, um, manager unit. And, uh, as you can see, the, uh, again, a, a number of sources of, of funding. Uh, the one thing this doesn't take into consideration is, uh, on the social service, social services that are provided through, um, the project, St. Luke, St. Owls, Ada County, City of Boise, uh, were providing basically operating funds. Now, as we all heard, Ada County has decided that they don't want to do that. So that's something to take into consideration in a project like this is, uh, social services, you know, does cost and how is it going to be paid for going forward? These are all, um, quote unquote, one bedroom, um, units. Um, they're, they're set up a little differently than a normal one bedroom, but, uh, that's, that's really what they were for. Um, the amenity packages, like I said, social services, you know, medical service for, for them, you know, get them, get them off the street. Hopefully you get them sober, get them working towards, uh, you know, productive life so that they can move into someplace like Adair that's more of a, uh, low income project. I think that's all we have for our presentation. Happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Jack. Yeah. Um, council, any questions? Any further questions?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Strater?
Just to make sure that we've captured, I just want to make sure we understand the different tools cities have available to help. So it sounds like land donation, some cities donate money directly. And it looks like there are several cities that use CBDG funds either as forgivable loans or as loans. Is there anything we're missing in, in terms of possibilities?
Well, and as, as we mentioned, um, IHFA has, uh, federal funds through HUD. Uh, and actually, I'm sure you've all heard that the, the workforce housing, the state of Idaho is, is, um, as allocated or is in the process of, the bills have been approved, uh, takes effect, I believe, July, July 1. We will also be managing that. We're in the process of putting out a, a, allocation agreement, rules and regulations, if you will, for, for those funds. Those, it's, like I said, it's, it takes, it takes a lot of people, takes a lot of project, you know, uh, sources to come into the project. You know, the tax credit is the biggie. I mean, because it is, it comes in, it's going to be anywhere from 50 to 70% of the total project cost. And it is equity. And so that, you know, of course, reduces your debt service, which allows you to, uh, rent to lower income family.
Just to follow up, from what I understand, when you're putting these applications in to get your allocations, if a city or municipality is contributing, that helps, that help, basically helps you increase the likelihood of receiving an allocation? Is that, are there any, versus that true? And I guess second, are there any, um, differentiators in terms of amounts? Like, I saw that example, City of Napa looked like had put in a modest amount of CBDG loans. That is relative to the size of that project looked like a modest contribution. But as you understand, municipalities don't have, you know, the money tree in our backyard. This is all, you know, and so CBDG funds make sense to me because we already have these funds. Just understanding, is the amount that a city contributes help in different, differing levels in terms of receiving those allocations? How do you think about that in terms of how much a city can do to help?
You know, Councilwoman, I think it's, it's really not the amount. It's the fact that we want to know that the, the city municipality is behind the project. And, uh, you know, we, we've done a lot of project up in the Wood River Valley where they've, they've haven't contributed a lot. The last couple, they've contributed quite a bit because they've seen what it can do for the community. Uh, but, but the fact that, you know, maybe we'll put in a little bit of the CBPG, maybe we'll donate a little bit of land, maybe we'll do this. That, that's when we know, uh, and, and actually the developer gets points for the amount of contribution. So it, every little bit helps. And it, you know, it doesn't have to be a lot, but when you start packing them all together, then they start adding up.
Thank you. That's really helpful to hear that. Mr. President?
Councilwoman Pearl?
Uh, we all recently had the honor of meeting with your Erin Anderson at the Housing, um, Authority. And I chatted with her at length and she did, explained all of this to me, which was exceptionally helpful. But she did comment something along the lines of kind of the timing of some of these programs don't always line up with when you receive federal funds, maybe in January. And then, you know, our CBPG doesn't get approved until May or June. And then, and then they're, you know, they have to be spent in a fiscal year. And so can you help us understand how that timing is, can be, maybe, you know, what we can do, I guess, to help with that? Because it sounds like there's some funds not being used or could be lost out on just because of when the different application processes.
Absolutely. You're, you're, you're exactly right. I mean, it comes in. So, um, normally, uh, for the home and Housing Trust Fund, we're getting that allocation in March or April. Sometimes we don't get them till October. It kind of depends on when HUD, you know, gets around to actually, say signing the check, but signing the allocation agreement. What we can do is if, if you are going to, uh, allocate, let's say, CBPG funds to, uh, Aaron and, and the housing company, uh, we'll take a letter from you that says, we have approved them as soon as we get the funds for fiscal year 2023 or whatever, uh, then we will allocate X number of dollars for that project. And we'll take that in consideration, uh, of course. Um, I know that with the, um, City of Boise on Adair, they, uh, went through a NOFA and approved the developer for home funds for the project. And we, we took that basically, it's on a commitment letter because you really can't commit federal funds in a, in a deal like that. But say, we have allocated, we will allocate X number of dollars for this project. So, um, it is, it's, there is a timing issue. Sometimes it doesn't work quite the way it should be. But, you know, if the City of Meridian is going to put their name on a pa, piece of paper and says, this developer, we're going to do this, we'll take that, uh, sure.
Having worked on the municipality side, I think one of the challenges is, is meeting everybody's deadlines because everybody's program year is different. And so, um, the, the better equipped that you can help a developer with the, the commitments, the, the more easy it moves through a process. And so when a developer is still trying to piece together, um, one of the projects that I worked on, I think, had 17 different funding sources. And so that is, I mean, collaboration and, and coordination to make sure that we get all of these to hit just right. So it's, um, there, it is not a perfect science, but the more that we can help developers be equipped with those, um, sources of funds, it helps them to move their projects along in a little bit more timely fashion as well.
Right. Thank you. Anything else? Great. Well, we appreciate you making this presentation and help us out, understanding that. And, I should learn my fractions better or percentages better when I was in high school, but I didn't pay that close attention.
And we're happy to answer any questions. See if you have additional questions down the line. We're happy to come back or, you know, send us an email. I know. For HUD has, knows, knows how to get contact.
Great. Thank you. Thank you once again. Appreciate it. Council, that brings us to the end of our agenda. A motion to adjourn. Councilman Portman? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
I will call this City Council regular meeting to order. For the record, today is Wednesday, May 18th, 2022. It is 6:02 PM. Our first order of business will be roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burnt. Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here. Our next order of business is pledge of allegiance. Will everyone rise and? And, Mr. Clerk, we don't have anybody available for community invocation tonight.
That's correct, Mr. President.
Moving on, we are at the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Councilman Borton.
There are no changes to the published agenda, so I move that we adopt it without changes.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? The ayes have it. We have adopted the agenda. Next up is the public forum. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
Mr. President, we did not.
All right. All right, under action items, the first item tonight is a public hearing from McCray Meadow, S H P 2021-0006. Alan, you're doing the presenting, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Greetings, Council. Alan Tiefenbach, planner with the City of Meridian. This is a request for a short plat. The property is just a little more than a quarter of an acre. It's zoned R15, is located... Oh, I always forget to do that. My bad, sorry about that. Let's see here. Screen sharing failed to start. Did I get it that time? Okay, thanks. So, yeah, a quarter acre lot, zoned R15, located at 1028 Northeast 3rd Street. Property is designated for Old Town in our future land use map. There is an existing 1350 square foot, so not quite 1400 square foot, single-family residence on the property that was constructed in 1932. This applicant requests a short plat to subdivide this property into two lots. That's what you can see here. That would be containing the existing residence on a lot of about 7,700 square feet. And then there would be a second lot of about 4,900 square feet for a second residence. The access to the existing residence right now comes from Carlton, which is here. The access to the new residence would come from this alley here. There is a street template. We have a downtown Meridian city core, street cross-section master plan. That's a lot to say. There is a template of what Northeast 3rd Street should look like. That's here. The template shows detached sidewalk running along here. In this particular case, what the applicant is proposing is not exactly like what's shown on the template. The first part is staff is not requiring curb and gutter at this time. And the reason why is because Northeast 3rd is going to be reconstructed in the future. We are requiring the applicant to put in sidewalk. The way that sidewalk is being shown, what the applicant wants to do, is not exactly what's shown on the template. And the reason why is that there is a huge tree on the property, which you can see here. We talked to the city arborists, that would be this tree here. And if they were to put in the curb and the gutter in the sidewalk, the way that the street template showed, it would kill that tree. We've worked with the applicant probably well over a year to get them to redesign the sidewalk, which is what you can see now. And it basically, it's further out and it goes around the tree to save the tree. In addition to that, as you know, there's a requirement for landscape buffer and you have to put in one tree per 35 feet. However, the canopy of this tree is 90 feet across. It is a huge tree. So, the applicant requested alternative compliance to not have to put in the landscape buffer. I'm not sure what putting two additional trees within this huge canopy would do, especially when they grew. The planning director did approve that alternative compliance. The only thing I wanted to make... So, staff recommends approval. We have some conditions in the staff report. The only thing I wanted to mention is there is one slight change. In the staff report, I made a comment about that there were some discussions regarding the locations of water and sewer on the property. Right now, the sewer is coming up from this alley. And Carlton Street is being rebuilt and eventually they're going to put in a new water and new sewer main. At the time, in the staff report, I mentioned that it was probably going to be challenging for the applicant to put in the service lines because you have to have a certain amount of separation. And we weren't sure about if they would be able to do it and whether they could do it and whether it would underlay the carport. Since the time of the staff report, staff talked to Public Works. In their opinion as well, this is a service line, it's a private line. We're not going to require an easement for that because really it's a private line and the only easement that needs to happen is between the property and the property to the south. So, it doesn't matter how the applicant connects in to the main to the north. They just have to connect in somewhere and figure out how to run the lines. Reason I say that is because there's a condition of approval. Staff is recommending that condition, which is 1B, just be removed. It's a non-issue now. With that, I don't have anything else with my presentation, Council.
Thank you, Alan. Is the applicant here? Come on up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Russ McCray and I live at 1027 Cameron Street in Boise. But I bought this house when I was young.
And anything you want to add to the staff report? Anything we should know?
No, no. We love downtown Meridian. That's why we want to keep the old house there. Our plans of building another residence there is a single family. We don't want it to be an imposing... We want it to fit in. So, that's all within our... We know our neighbors there, partially because we flood irrigated for years and years. And if you've ever been in that situation, you understand that you get to know those people quite well. And so, we want to make sure that we're on good terms. So, you know, we don't plan on building the largest structure we can. We want to make sure it fits within kind of what downtown Meridian really is. I grew up on Carlton Street, so just about seven houses down from where this house is.
We have a lot in common then, Russell, because I grew up on... My first four years in Meridian was on Carlton.
Oh, really?
Until we moved over on the other side of town, so.
That's funny.
Yeah, great memories of riding my bike all over there. But that was a lot, many more years before you were there, so. Any other questions, Council? Great, thank you. This is a public hearing. Do we have anybody in the room that would like to testify on this? Anybody online?
Nobody online, nobody signed up, unless Mr. Wardle is interested.
If not, Alan, any final comments? We good to go?
No, sir.
All right, Council.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton. Move we close the public hearing on item 1, S H P 2021-0006.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Ayes have it. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Seems to be well-presented, very straightforward solution for a good downtown resident. And wish you and your family luck with this project. Sounds fantastic. So, I'm going to make a motion that we approve S H P 2021-0006 as presented in the staff report of May 18th, 2022.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the application. Good question, Councilman Borton. Do we need to remove 1B from that? Or was that in the staff report to remove, Alan?
Of councilperson, members of the council, that was in the original staff report. I would recommend your condition be to remove that... Sorry, that your approval motion be to remove condition... I think I said 1B.
And the second agrees? All right. Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater.
Aye.
Burnt. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries.
Great.
Thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing for Pavilion at Windsong. Alan, you get two for two tonight.
Two for two. All right, so this is a... It's more complicated. It sounds more complicated than it really is. This is a... Well, I'll see if I can make it more complicated for you. This is a development agreement modification, a rezoning, a preliminary plat, and a conditional use. Property is a little short of five acres. Presently, zoned CC. It's located at the northwest corner of North Linder and West Eustick. Surrounding area is comprised of single-family detached, the commercial center, a lot of it's building out. That's where the Sawtooth Landing is across the street. A newly developing mixed-use residential development is nearby. Some of you may remember this. In 2019, this property was proposed... So, let me back up. Originally, when this was annexed, the development agreement that was done at the time, they didn't know what they were going to do with this property. So, the development agreement that is vesting with it right now says you have to amend this development agreement before you do anything because they didn't know what was going to happen. Now, in 2019, there was a proposal to amend that development agreement. And there was also a conditional use to allow a mix of uses. This included multi-family, a self-storage facility, office, and retail uses. Originally, the planning commission did not support the idea of the self-storage and they had concerns about the commercial. When this came to the council, the council had concerns with the multi-family. There was a lot of concerns from the neighbors about the multi-family, in particular, the height of it. Eventually, what happened was that the council approved the conditional use for the self-storage, but they said that no multi-family could occur on the site. The conditional use was never... The conditional use in the development agreement was never recorded, so it just fell apart. This particular request is to... And I saw on the right-hand side here is kind of a zoning exhibit to explain to you what's going on. This is rezoning three and a half acres of the property from CC to R40. So, the whole property right now is CC. What you see here in gray is they want to rezone all that to R40. They also want to do a preliminary plat for 33 townhouse lots. Those are what... Basically, everything that you see here is townhouses with the exception of what you see here on the corner and what you see here. So, this is commercial, and I'll talk about these in a second. That's vertically integrated. But the rezoning is for the townhouse area because townhouses are not allowed in CC. Townhouses are only allowed by R40 and they're allowed under conditional use. So, again, it is a rezoning from CC to R40 for most of the sites. Preliminary plat for 33 townhouses. It is two lots for two vertically-integrated buildings with six residential units and one commercial lot. As I said, for the townhouses, a conditional use permit is required. As mentioned, because specific details were not provided with the annexation, the development agreement modification is also required, basically, for the comprehensive plan and the development as known. This proposal also included a request for private streets. Most of what is being shown here is a private street with the exception of crosswinds and wafting, which are here. The director did approve that request. So, again, the future land use map for this recommends this as mixed-use community. This is allocated areas that community serving uses are seamlessly integrated into the fabric. This is a mixed-use development. It talks about mixed-use has different elements. It talks about three types of land uses, high density near employment, being centered around public spaces. It also has a percentage on how much residential can occur. It encourages vertically-integrated structures, which most will call those mixed-use buildings. This application does reflect those three types of uses. The majority of the residential is clustered around a central space, is what you can see in the middle here. So, not all of it, but most of it. There are also those mixed-use vertically-integrated buildings, which you see here to the south and east. Staff does support this and they certainly are excited about the idea of the vertically-integrated structures. Our concern, which we have passed on to the applicant, our biggest concern is that what we were afraid of, and I'll go about more about it, but we were afraid that these vertically-integrated structures would get approved and then eventually get converted into townhouses. And I can show you, if you look at the elevations, you'll see what I was talking about. That said, as a condition of approval, we recommended at the time a building permit that the ground floors of all the vertically-integrated buildings, so the bottom floors, would meet occupancy class requirements for commercial structures. So, they would have to build them with the building permit for a commercial structure so they wouldn't be able to... It wouldn't be able to convert them into townhouses without having to go through a building permit process and then staff would catch it and say you can't do that. My understanding is that the applicant is amenable to this. I don't believe the applicant has any intentions, but in the future, if this got flipped to somebody else, we don't know what those intentions are. So, again, we're trying to preserve that commercial. Staff mentioned in the staff report that originally, we thought that the vertically-integrated buildings, which is what you see down here, would be more appropriate on the north side. We had a few different reasons for that. We thought it would integrate better with the commercial. It wouldn't bring all the traffic into the southern part of the site. That was our recommendation. Applicant did not like the idea. The planning commission also did not like that idea and the planning commission is agreeable to the applicant keeping it as it is. This is certainly one staff is not willing to die on the sword for. We're okay with the recommendations, we don't object. At the time of the staff report, staff had some concerns about... You don't see it here, but originally, this row of townhouses here was one long wall. And there's houses that are newly built here and we were nervous about this long wall in front of the houses and how that would impact them. We recommended that that row of buildings be broken up or done something like that. The applicant has subsequently broken these up. We actually recommended a very specific area where it would be broken up because there was a house right here. And we wanted to make sure that they had a view corridor, they still had some visibility. So, the subject property, again, located North Linder, Eustick. There's an existing road, which is West Crosswinds. That's what you see here. Right now, it stubs at the property here. This is what serves the Windsong neighborhood. This development would close an access off of Linder and it would create new access on Eustick. And it would also connect Windsong to Eustick. This was always intended. Again, it was stubbed here with the idea that this was going to go through. Most, if not all, of the public comments that I've heard has been in regard to the connectivity about not connecting crosswinds and keeping traffic from going into their neighborhood. Applicant did mention in their narrative that they were proposing a three-way stop at Crosswinds and Wafting, which is right here. When we saw ACHD's staff report, ACHD talked about traffic calming. When we had ACHD on the line at Planning Commission, they also said traffic calming. They didn't see a stop sign. Again, that wasn't a condition of approval for us, but we just encouraged the applicant to work with ACHD about traffic calming. I think that was the other issue that the neighbors had expressed. You don't want cars going in too fast. We want to do something that slows them down. When we originally did the staff report, what is shown as an alley here did not meet the requirements for alley and it also didn't meet the requirements for a common lot or for a common drive. It had too many lots on it for a common drive, wasn't wide enough for an alley. Applicant has since widened this to 24 feet, which is what's required for a public street. So, they're okay there. This one is still 23 feet. They'll have to widen that, they know that. I don't think that's an issue. Okay, so one... Another thing that we talked to the applicant about, I think it's mostly been resolved, is with the original drawings, you don't see this here. Along Linder here, there is a seven-foot-wide sidewalk. Original versions of the plans, if you looked at the file, there was another pathway that was kind of running parallel with this. It was like two pathways next to each other. We thought that was somewhat redundant. We didn't think that was necessary. We talked to parks, they agreed. We just said, you don't need to put that other pathway there. Just keep the seven-foot sidewalk, it's fine. Along the south, it was the same situation. They had the seven-foot sidewalk along Eustick and then they were showing a 10-foot-wide pathway, which you can still see here. I don't think they've changed this yet. Our recommendation was, you know what, just widen the whole thing to 10 feet. You don't need to have this extra trail, if you see it here. Widen the whole thing 10 feet, and this is one of our conditions, and then just connect to the 10-mile trail once you get to the west of the property. I'm... I don't... It's not been changed on this plan. My understanding, I don't think the applicant has an issue with this. I just don't think it's been on the plan. Again, it's one of the conditions. One concern that parks and trails did have is if you look at the... One concern that parks and trails did have is, if you look at the vertically-integrated structures here, you'll see each of them has an entrance onto the trail. That was kind of like, what could go wrong with that, right? When you have, every building has six different ways for somebody to get onto the pathway with a major pathway. So parks said, "Take them off. We shouldn't have more than one connection to each vertically-integrated building." Again, they didn't change on the plans. I don't think the applicant has an issue with that. That's one of our conditions as well. Remove the walkways. Only put one in. So here's the elevations. These building elevations showed townhouses comprising of rocks, cement board, hardy board, lap siding. These are great elevations. Staff didn't have any issue with the design of the elevations, but what I talked about earlier again is our concern. If you look at Building G and Building H at the bottom, these are the buildings that were supposed to be the vertically-integrated buildings. Now, again, great architecture, but our concern was, are these really vertically-integrated buildings, or are these townhouses, or like, you know, a townhouse with a home office? So that was our concern. If this is going to be a mixed-use development, and if this is going to be sold as such, and if the council is going to believe that they're approving that, we need to make sure that these vertically-integrated buildings really are vertically-integrated buildings. We've talked to the applicant. Applicant, from what I understand, is fine with having the requirement about the bottom floor being rated for commercial only at time of building permit, so that it can't be turned into an apartment. One comment from the Planning Commission at the time was that the Planning Commission had the same concern. They didn't want to see these converted into just townhouses. They also had some concerns. They just didn't want to see the whole thing turned into a rental. The Planning Commission actually added a very clever condition that was prior to certificate of zoning compliance, that there would be condo plats for at least the commercial portions of these buildings, so that the, even if somebody lived their own both buildings, the ability is still there for a separate person to own the airspace for that commercial area. The only thing I would say that's a change on that is that when we looked at what the requirements are for a condo plat, and I didn't catch this actually until today, the conditions of a condo plat says the building already has to be built. So it wouldn't work prior to certificate of zoning compliance. All I'm saying is that there would be a recommendation to change for the condition that the condo plat would occur prior to certificate, or prior to certificate of occupancy and not CCC. So that they get their CCC, they apply for the building permits, they get the building permits approved, they have to do the condo plat before they actually get their CO. This would work. So this is what happened again at Planning Commission. This was heard by Planning Commission. They moved to recommend approval for all of this. There were several citizens that were here, and they were in the Windsong neighborhood to the west. They had the concerns in regard density, traffic impacts with connecting the road, which now the name just escaped me, Crosswinds, whether or not traffic calming could be implemented. The commission agreed with the applicant, that they thought that the vertically-integrated structures where they're showing them was probably the best spot, and they were okay with that. As I mentioned, they added a condition that short plat condominiumized those, and that would happen prior to CCC, which I just described to you, would not happen. There was an additional condition that I also believe that the applicant was okay with, that the exterior facades of the vertically-integrated buildings integrate brick or stone, and I believe that the intent behind that was that they wanted to make sure that the bottom floors of these structures look somewhat different from the top floor to represent the idea that this is a commercial portion, and it's not all just one townhouse. I believe that was the intent. Again, I believe that the applicant was okay with that, and as I mentioned, we're recommending that the condition that says that the condo plat happened prior to CCC just be changed to say prior to the certificate of occupancy. Rather complicated, but it didn't need to be. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I work for the government, so I make it as complicated as I can.
And that was a joke. Yes, okay. Counsel, any questions for Alan?
Mr. President.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Alan, can you just refresh my memory? What are, what's the other developments that are on the other kind of three corners that kind of neighbor this property?
I have them listed here, if I can remember. One of them was the Sawtooth, Sawtooth Commercial across the street to the east. There is, caught me off guard here. I don't know if I can name off, I don't, I don't know if I can name off the projects off the top of my head. I could get them and look them up.
We have the Ada.
President. But I'm not that good.
Ambulance, paramedics.
Looks like the applicant has it. Maybe they'll present this. I don't have it memorized. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Alan.
Yeah, Mr. President, there's a residential development on the opposite corner that you heard a few months ago with, I think it was multi-family facing Eustache, and it was a residential behind it.
I have them all here. I'll give him the honor of doing it since he prepared this.
Mr. President.
Steph. Councilman Burrow.
Thank you. Alan, what, with vertically-integrated, what are the parking standards? So if you have a, if your condo unit is, say, you know, 800 feet, how are we figuring out, you know, if they have clients that come in, say it's a one-person accounting firm, or it's a masseuse, or where are they parking?
Sure. Parking requirements are one per residential unit, but you have to provide the same amount of parking for the commercial. So if you've got, you know, our parking requirements are one parking space per 500 square feet of commercial. If you've got a, if you've got a thousand-square-foot commercial space, then you'd have to have two parking spaces for that, plus the one for the top. If you look at the site plan that they're showing here, they're actually well over their parking requirements. They have, if they've got parking cut out here for the vertically-integrated, they've got parking that's over here, and they've also got parking over here, as well as all the parking for the commercial building. I think I did the math on it in the staff report, and if I remember correctly, I think they were 11 spaces over what they would have been required by the code.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Burrow.
So the parking spaces that are in the driveway are not being counted towards commercial use. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Those parking spaces, they're actually, again, overparking. They're showing one, if I believe correctly, it's one parking space in front of the house, one parking space in the garage. That's the, that's the parking merely for the residential portion of the site.
Mr. President, a follow-up.
Go ahead.
What are the signage, what does code say about them putting up signs regarding their businesses?
Are we referring to what the sign code is?
Yeah, so are they permitted to put signs in the, in the green space in front of those units? Or can they put signs on the, on the building itself, or, I mean?
So they.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Councilperson. They can have a wall sign with their business. I can't give you the exact square footage. It's two square feet per building frontage, I think, per linear frontage. Again, I'm not as good as Bill is. I think it's one square foot per two linear feet of building frontage. As if it's a commercial business, you're also allowed to have a monument sign at the entrance. They could not put signs in the, in the grass. That would be considered an off-site sign. They can't do off-site signage.
Any further questions? All right, will the applicant come up and state your name and address for the record, please?
Mr. President, Councilmembers, Jeremy Amar, 1548 Caius Creek Drive, Meridian. Appreciate you guys, you are hearing us tonight for this. We are excited about this project and agree with Alan and appreciate his staff report. We are, we are proposing, as Alan said, 45 dwelling units, a mix between townhomes and vertically-integrated units. The reason for the rezon, as Alan explained, is in the CC zone, vertically-integrated units is a principally permitted use. So, but instead of proposing vertically-integrated units for the whole site, which the ones we're proposing are three stories, I think the maximum height is 50 feet for vertically-integrated units in CC, we felt that it was a better compatibility and a better use to add townhomes adjacent to the Windsong neighborhood and keep the vertically-integrated at the corner and on Linder and Eustache facing those. The townhomes are, are a mix of three-bedroom, two-and-a-half, or three-bath, as well as a few two-bedroom, two-bath, the two buildings along the north. And then also one additional commercial retail lot. We don't have a use for that. We have hopes and dreams and ideas, but whatever goes there will come back before Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as this body, for a conditional use permit for whatever the future use is for that commercial pad. It is community mixed-use, which Alan went through very well, explaining. The, the projects near us across the street is Edington Commons, which is 92 both attached and detached homes. Sawtooth Landing is the office park with the eight office lots. And then Lennon Point is kind of kitty-corner to us. That's also mixed-use with a combination of multi-family and single-family. Windsong is our direct neighbor. It is a project that Biltmore completed last year. We developed all, well, that project was developed long, long ago. We purchased it and built it out and built those 66 homes. And it turned out to be a fantastic project. We're close to quite a few amenities. We're close to Settlers Park is a mile up Eustache, close to Shopping Center, Orchard Park, where the library is going in, Winco, shopping centers, Costco and Walmart, they're, everything's very accessible. This as Alan explained, we do have a common area, even though it is smaller than the five-acre kind of requirement for open space requirement. We, we still wanted a community feel, a common area for kids to play in. So we have the open park in the middle with, it'll have a gazebo and a picnic area. For parking, parking is always a concern with us as well. After we had met with staff and kind of gone through a couple of the comments, we did rearrange some things on site a little bit, and were able to find nine more parking spaces to bring, bring that total up a little more. So overall, right now, not including any driveways or garages, there's, there's 38 total extra parking spaces, some of which will be for the commercial, others are for guest use, as well as they, all of the units have a two-car garage, and all but the two furthest north buildings have a 20-foot-deep driveway for the residents to use as parking as well. We, as Alan explained, we did, we did split this building into two buildings instead of one to just to, yeah, to break up that wall to ease that buffer, that transition between the single-family Windsong into the townhome units. At North Wafting and Crosswinds, we did provide a three-way stop after our neighborhood meeting, and traffic coming through there was a concern. ACHD suggested we do a bulb out instead. We're, we're open to that, too, so we'll continue and work through ACHD as we design and finish the, the plans for that. Alan showed you some example elevations. We want this project to feel compatible, to look compatible to the residential neighbor that it's next to, and a transition into our, our live-work units. Since P&amp;Z, we have revisited the live-work units to add some stone or brick on to the front of the commercial areas, as well as more glass, glass door with some large windows on each side, so that it, it does have more of that commercial office feel. The other thing that we, we have done, and I think it, you can see it, we show all the sidewalks coming up. We are agreeable to, to reduce that. We would prefer to have maybe two kind of at each end, or sort of each end, so that way it's not right in the middle. So we'd prefer a little bit of flexibility, but, but we really don't need six sidewalk connections to Linder or Eustache. And we do agree about removing the additional pathway on Eustache and widening that sidewalk. As traffic is always a concern with new development, we've, we agree with ACHD's staff report, their, their request and requirement to extend and connect crosswind. We believe that it will be a benefit to Windsong. Currently, Windsong has to exit either through Water Song to their north or Bridge Tower to the west to leave the subdivision. Crosswind will give, give a direct access to Linder and then easy access to Eustache to to exit the neighborhood. While some of the residents in the townhomes may go out through Windsong, nothing would stop them from doing, though. We don't feel that that's really very likely, just because it would be, it's so much easier just to get onto Linder and then jump over to Eustache, or head north on Linder. And so we believe that the connection to Crosswind will really be a benefit to the, the residents in, in Windsong. One of the conditions that Planning and Zoning asked that Alan went over is regarding the condominium plat. Alan discussed that already, that Planning and Zoning mentioned to tie it to the CCC, but the wording in the, the code says that the buildings have to be built, and so we're okay to tie it to certificate of occupancy or tie it to after-building permit, so that that way we can do this as a short plat and be able to have those, so they can be condominium units. The rest of the project are, I mean, our townhome, and we'll go through the regular plat process. And then, once we have building permits, we can apply for the short plat process for these other two buildings. One point of clarification that I would like, in the short plat process code, it states that the proposed subdivision does not exceed four lots. This would be 12 lots. I, I believe it's two different sections where condominium plats are specifically allowed to be processed as a short plat, so I don't believe that the four plat, or four-lot limit would apply here, but we would like clarification on that. And we would be very amenable to do the condominium plat. With that, I appreciate your time, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. I was in Pompeii and saw original Roman vertically-integrated housing. They had storefronts, and then they had their housing behind it. It was interesting. So it's an old idea. It's been around for a long time, very successfully. I just wanted to step through this. Where, if you could show me a picture, where is the storefront in the vertically-integrated?
Yeah, Mr. President, Councilmember. So here on, on this view, the storefront would face Linder as well as Eustache. You can see here where, where I drew in two sidewalks connecting, so that way the storefront is looking out and facing the two main arterial roads.
Right, yeah. So one concern that I have, or a question I have, I think about a storefront as a place that I would park. And so I wanted you to sort of walk through, where's the signage? I think along the lines of what Councilwoman Perrow was saying. Could you just walk us through, like, where's the signage? How do customers find the storefront? Where do the customers park? And how does that fit with the concept of it being commercial on the ground floor?
So the, the signage would be, as Alan explained, it would be at kind of the front doors, the glass doors of those commercial spaces. So the the signage would be, as Alan explained, it would be at kind of the the front doors, the the glass doors of those commercial spaces. Parking, we have here in this, this mouse is a little little hard to move. So we have parking along here that they would be able to to park to access along the front. Or as well down here, there'd be a sidewalk that connects to come along the front as well. We have to try to balance what what you're mentioning of of storefront and parking in front of a building versus planning's desire to have parking kind of hidden from the road. Maybe Alan can help me out here. I see a hand raised.
Ellen.
Alan Tiefenbach, associate planner. I want to clarify, our specific use standards say that parking cannot be in front of the vertically integrated structures. None of the parking shall be located in front of the structure. It's actually a code requirement.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I could follow up. Alan, could you walk through the the thinking behind that a little bit? Or is that because we don't do a lot of vertically integrated? Is that for a specific reason? Like, I I would think that the vertically integrated commercial would do much better if it had parking in the in the front storefront area. So it's just a little confusing to me.
Counsel. Counselperson Schrader, you're putting me into a tricky position here. I'm telling you what the code says. I I think that a lot of times when you're having some kind of mixed use building, you're thinking about having some kind of ankle parking in front of it. That's not what our code says.
Mr. President.
Oh, it's Ritter.
Sure, no problem. Understood. So you don't necessarily take a position on the code. It's just code is what it is. There's something there that I just give some feedback doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me in terms of what you'd want to do with a vertically integrated commercial structure. Maybe we should revisit that at some point.
Yeah, hard to wiggle out of this one. I'll leave it up to Mr. Neri about whether the council can actually waive a requirement for the specific use standards. I can't. I'm not going to make any position on whether or not our code is good. I've not been here long enough.
That's probably wise, Alan. Mr. Neri, do you have any comment?
Help us out here.
So yeah, generally, no. If it is a code requirement, it is a requirement. I have to look. And I was trying to find that while Alan was talking on some of our codes says unless approved by council or unless council waves or something like that. So I'd have to look if that is allowed, but generally it's not.
Okay, thanks for the feedback. Maybe we could follow up on that later on.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pro.
So similar to councilwoman Schrader, I'm thinking through moving around this and access to these buildings. So can you show me if if there was someone that was wheelchair bound or had a disability, how they would get to the storefront? Because it looks like there's steps up to each of the units. So how are they gonna are they gonna access from the back and where it's flat? Or where where would someone get into the storefront that couldn't use steps?
Sure, Mr. President, council member. So parking would be here. It I mean, there's landscaping here. There would need to be this connection from the parking sidewalk to the sidewalk in front. And then these the buildings, the this, the door above the steps is what enters into the residence. Then the these kind of free glass panels, again, we don't quite have exactly what would that that would look like. But I mean, we imagine a full glass door with a couple of large windows on the side. Whether it be the metal storefront door or not, I I don't know yet. We'll kind of work through that with our design. But all of those are at ground level, and so they would all be ADA accessible.
Mr. President, follow up.
Councilwoman Pro.
So I realize this rendering is that just that it's a rendering, but so there is going to be a connection from one of the of the for the handicap accessible.
Absolutely.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Cavanagh.
Jeremy, this this vertically integrated piece is really interesting to me, and and I'm kind of fascinated by it. Like Councilman Schrader, I I tried to wrap my head around about how the commercial side is successful with the challenges, maybe with our code about access. Can you give us a flavor? What's what's the type of business that is really successful in this type of environment? What do you? What do you contemplate going into this space? That is that is a win.
Mr. President, council member, we see this. Well, I'll back up a little bit. Over the last couple of years, as we've all gone through the COVID pandemic and had lots and lots of Zoom meetings and had lots of practice with Zoom. As we've worked through staff report, lots of the the meetings that we've had. Staff from Meridian and and other agencies are holding these meetings in their kids bedroom or wherever they can find. And so I don't know that this the so having this dedicated commercial space allows someone to to have an office. Maybe maybe an attorney that's working or an accountant. There there are some specific uses that are allowed in those hair salon. I I think one of the uses is a drinking establishment. I don't really see that happening in here, but there are some requirements in the vertically vertically integrated code for that. But I see that accountant or lawyer, a person that needs a dedicated office space away from the family area. Being able to have this that they could bring and meet with clients here. And have for or their commercial space.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Maybe one kind of additional question. Jeremy, you touched on this a little bit in your opening remarks, but the why the decision to do a limited amount of vertically integrated and really put a lot more townhouse product in here? And the reason why I ask that, without a doubt, we have the need for housing in Meridian. But we we've been really informed as a council how much commercial space that we've lost Meridian over the years. And so I'm I'm always very hesitant to be supportive of giving up additional land that could do a commercial product for more residential. So maybe help us understand the business decision around that.
Sure, Mr. President, council member. This so if I can change my slide again. The main reason that we we are asking to do townhomes is for compatibility with with our neighbors. If we were to do it all as vertically integrated units, that's gonna put three story buildings up close to to the residents instead of a two story townhome. To be able to have that office on the ground floor with the garage and then the living area on the two floors above. It it would put much taller buildings closer to the resident. The other reason for as you all know that this property has been here for for a long time. And a variety of uses have been brought before planning and zoning and council. It's it's a very, very difficult corner to make work for purely commercial offices. There's no access to you stick at all. And so with only the access off of Linder, it it's difficult to do a traditional commercial use on this property. And so we feel that with the need for alternative housing types like townhomes or condominiums that having townhomes and then some commercial, what what we could make work to have the transition from residential to the condominiums was the the better use for the property.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mary.
I just could add, I did find the particular code and and there is no exception for the council to allow parking. It does say none of the required parking shall be located in front of the structure. The allowed residential uses in a vertically integrated unit also include or non residential uses are it says varieties of things, arts, entertainment, recreation facility, artist, studio, civic, social, paternal organizations, daycare, drinking establishment, education institution, financial institution, healthcare, social assistance, industry craftsmen, laundromat, nursing, or residential care facility. So there is obviously a list of varieties of uses, but it is very specific in code that none of the required parking for the business shall be included in the front of the structure.
Thank you, Bill. So a question. So it sounds like what you're trying to do is meet the commercial definitions that's required for the property, but at the same time, lower the the impact terms of traffic and not have a high volume retail. It just wouldn't fit in those properties. Is that is that what your approach is for for this development?
Mr. President, yes, that that is correct.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pro.
I want to understand a little bit more about the relationship with the commercial to the residential. So if you're condominiumizing the commercial and they can be sold or leased separately from whoever occupies the residence, then is there going to be a commercial HOA that's going to keep, you know, the commercial units in line with you know, noise concerns? Are the are these units going to be able to be modified like other commercial retail centers are? For example, some places, I have a client that's interested in 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 a live work unit because she wants to do her own nail salon, but nail salons require certain ventilation. So she'd have to be able to come in and modify that commercial space to have her salon in there, which is why she doesn't have it in her home. So is is that something that's going to be allowed to be done in these like norm like other kinds of commercial buildings? And how will that affect the residential use above if there are two different operators, two different owners?
Mr. President, council member. So the vertically integrated units, as we understand them, aren't they are not a completely separate commercial space on the ground floor. Those those commercials spaces are integrated with the unit. And so the the garages are located here at the back of the unit. In the front of, I mean, so on the other side of the garage wall would be the commercial office area as well as the stairs going up to the resident. And so that it's it is connected and part of the residence above as a as a live work unit. And we believe that that's that's how the code reads and requires for the vertically integrated units that it's I believe there's a different code section for live work, kind of like what's going on across the street where all of that ground floor is purely commercial. And then above is is separate residence. These would be would be tied. So the condominium plat would would split this into twelve individual lots. And so each condo would be the the residents above and the office below. Whether the person that lived there would be allowed to lease out that office to someone else, I I don't know the the rules or requirements on that.
Question, then, it might be for Alan, but so the condo plats, I think that was trying, the planning zoning commission was trying to get at preventing those being purchased flipped. And now we're in terms of changing that to just residential, all residential. Is that is that
Mr. President, members of the council, the the actual language of the planning commission said a short plaque to condominiumize the vertically integrated buildings should be required prior to certificate of zoning compliance. So yes, the intent was that they didn't want these to turn into rentals. There was a lot of discussion by the planning commission about if we're going to prove this, we don't want to have more rental townhouses. That was probably the meat of the discussion. They wanted to make sure that there were going to be sometimes the commercial spaces. And their intent was that if you condominiumize these commercial spaces and you require those to be built to commercial building standards, that it would be more likely that there would be some kind of non residential business occurring in the bottom. So so you under the condominiumizing part that you you could imply that there would be separate ownership, separate air ownership on the bottom floor versus ownership on the top floor.
Thank you.
Mr. President. I don't know if you're familiar with the Pine forty three development, but they were tempting in in the process of putting in nineteen live work units on Fairview. I don't know if you've had a chance to speak with any of their developers, curious to see kind of how they're going about it and what success they've had.
Mr. President, council member, I I am not familiar with it or have not spoken to them. But one, one of the things that we are doing besides having kind of the large glass walls that, again, would hinder it becoming a bedroom, that ground floor unit won't have a closet that that a bedroom would need. We we plan on having a bathroom attached down in that commercial space. And so it again, I I don't know that ten years now, ten years from now, if there's anything we can do for someone putting a bed down there. But that's not our intent, and we're trying to work with staff to kind of go through and make sure it meets commercial code for that area, that there's not a bedroom closet that that we have an office space with a bathroom in that area so that it it really is set up for as as an office, as a commercial space.
Mr. Houghlin.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Not sure if you guys covered this, but wanted to cover the drinking establishment possibilities. I'm just not sure how much sense it would make to end up with a drinking establishment in one of the live work units. Are you supportive of eliminating that potential use?
Mr. President, council member, I am. I I don't know how that works. It's as as Mr. Neri read, it's it. There's a whole list of items that are in the code. I don't can't imagine anybody thinking that one of those units is is good for a bar. It it just it's not. It it just doesn't fit. I I have absolutely no issue with doing that. I don't know how that would work to tie it kind of forever and always to
lease restriction.
We we do. There will be an HOA and a property management company that works for for the site. I mean, for common area landscaping and having that that HOA in there. So it I have no idea if it could be.
I'll ask Alan to weigh in on this.
Thanks, President, members of the council. Certainly, you have the purview to totally eliminate that. But just just so you know, he he read in the vertically integrated structures language. There's like a flavor of this is the kind of idea that's supposed to happen, but it's zoned CC. And CC zoning allows a drinking establishment by conditional use. It's entirely up to you. If you want to keep that as conditional use, meaning it would have to go to the planning commission. So it would require a public hearing. Either way, you could not do this by right. If you want to completely eliminate that, then certainly you could add to the DA that there shall not be any drinking establishment at all.
Oh, Alan, does that include in my subdivision that one house, I suspect, on weekends, there are drinking establishment?
Just private drinking establishments for the Super Bowl would be a very different story, sir.
Okay.
Okay, I think we'll Councilwoman Borden, yes.
Let's close the door on that topic, though. I think that's the the ask would be a condition within the DA that prohibits the use of these live work or drinking establishment. Is that would that be agreeable?
Mr. Mr. President, council member. Again, I I don't think I we we have any hard time with with that condition. As Alan mentioned, it it would have to be a conditional use for someone to want it. I I don't know how it works with code far as restricting in a DA what could or could not be there. I I'm really sorry that I ever brought it up.
Councilwoman Borden.
Mr. President, so the ask, I think what we're we're saying is the CUP path would be gone because the DA condition would say you can't do it. You can't even ask for it. It's just gone. So with that understanding, if that would be acceptable.
And before we move forward, I did want to ask Alan, he talked about the four lot limit clarification. Can you shed some light on that?
Mr. President, members of the council, I don't know if I can. I read, I was reading the language. And it the the condo plat is under the condo plat is under the short plat process. And it says at the start, this is a building area. I'm kind of looking at Bill. The the short plot says that it shall be for four lots or less. And then in that same section, it talks about the condo plat and what can be required for the condo plat. I'm almost saying this might be an interpretation or legal question. I wish Bill was here to help me with that. I would my my argument would be that that was not the intent of the condo plat, to keep it to four lots. I guess maybe Mr. Neri would probably want to weigh in on that.
Mr. Mary.
Sure, Mr. President, members of the council. I I agree with Alan. I think they're they're separate. I think there's two separate things concepts we're talking about because most of the short plat language is really talking about the like the earlier one you saw tonight, we're splitting a piece of property. a piece of property is to clear our property boundaries. Condominium is a separate process. So I don't think the limitation of four lots applies to the condo, because most condos are often are going to be more than four lots. So I do think it is a separate process. I don't see a conflict.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Clerk, do we have people signed up to testify?
Mr. President, only the applicant signed in. We did have one person sign in online, but they're not online.
If we have any room, let's try testimony. Mr. Brown.
For the record, Kent Brown, 3161 East Springwood. I thought it was really interesting, the discussion about commercial and parking in front of the building, because Planning Department for at least a decade has been telling us on our commercial, "You can't park in front of the building," and they want the designs to put the building up closer to the street so that you can see it, and then you drive around the back and come to the building. My wife had a business in Meridian that mostly, it was a flower and gift shop, she had it for 14 years, and that was one of her struggles, was that women shoppers didn't like driving around, they wanted to go directly to the front door, and that's a difficult thing, especially with this site. I mean, I can honestly say, because of the number of mixed-use community applications that I've submitted in the last year and a half, I hate it. I hate that comprehensive plan designation. And the reason being is the mixture that's required, and then they're on corners, and you have the inability to provide those commercial elements in any meaningful way for it to be commercial. And that's been a real challenge. One of the interesting things is, is that we've, as we've massaged this multiple times in our design, we've met with the neighbors each time with a neighborhood meeting. And when Biltmore built all of those houses next door, there wasn't any, you either like your builder, you don't like your builder, and they came liking the builder. And what Biltmore has tried to do with their townhouses is build that same level and quality in the townhouse product and make that work and be compatible with a neighbor, hitting a different price point, if you will. But being integrated into being able to move, you know, as these people want to move up, maybe sell their townhouse and move next door, because that's a good design, that's a good plan. The concern from the P&amp;Z and the reason for the short plat was that they were concerned that if you have a commercial user, would they want to be a renter? So they wanted them to be able to own that space. That was their concern. And a condo plat, the way that you generally do a condo plat is that you divide the land, and now you're dividing the space within the building. So when you understand that, this kind of meets that criteria. I'll stand for any questions.
Councilman Kavner.
And you've been doing this a long time, and I guess I'm trying to gauge your expertise, because when I think of Linder Road, on those hard corners, commercial, that's what I see. You know, maybe you have a church here, EMS center there, but everything else is commercial retail. So I guess my struggle is that this, it has been proven that commercial does work along Linder, and I'm struggling with this particular project on this corner being a better fit than traditional commercial. And I'm just, I'm trying to get your expertise as to why this is a better fit.
It all has to do with the access. I mean, if you had better access, a more intense or even a viable use. I mean, when I look at these live-work units, what I envision is if I was starting my business, and I'm a consultant, I work from home, that this would probably be a place that I could say to someone, "Hey, you want to come meet with me? I've got all the tools. I can show you the zoning, and we can sit down and draw out your plans and decide how to move forward." It is kind of like when people want to start their business, why are those flex spaces in the industrial work? This is the same thought processes that I see, I remember we used to call the flex buildings incubators, is that they are, they're trying to start a business, and this is kind of how they start. The, all of the concerns that everybody's had about the uses and how it's going to be maintained, those things are all laid out in the declarations in the Condominium Act that are required, that take care of that. And then, basically, these buildings being lot and blocks in the PAW subdivision, the buildings and grounds are all taken care of by them, and then the condominium act takes care of the building itself.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown? All right, thank you, Ken.
Thanks.
Council, any comments? Do you want to close the public hearing? Do you need to hear from the applicant? Oh, we do have one.
No, you have the applicant closing, if you...
Yeah. Does the applicant care to close?
Mr. President, council members. Again, we do feel that this is the best use for this corner, for this area. There's been a lot of discussion about the vertically-integrated units tonight. However, I'd like to remind councils that what, that those vertically-integrated units are a principally permitted use. So they're not really the item that we're bringing forward to council tonight. I know it's a part of our project, but tonight it's the Development Agreement mod, the rezone into R40, so that we can provide an additional housing type, those, the townhomes. That's what we need the conditional use permit for tonight. I've liked all the discussion about the vertically-integrated units. We're really excited to build those and provide those. It's something that's new to Biltmore that we're excited about. However, what we're coming before council about is the rezone to have that transition of townhomes into the existing residents that are next to us. I stand for any additional questions.
Yes, Councilman Kavner.
Jeremy, I want to be kind of upfront with where I'm coming from. More, my issue is the townhouses. I'd want to see more mixed use. I'd want to see more of the vertically-integrated. I think this is a little bit of vertically-integrated, which I think is contemplated in the mixed use, I mean, the CC zoning, with a lot more residential being put on top of it. And so, in my opinion, I don't think it meets the criteria, so I'm probably right now not in favor of the rezone request. I just want to be upfront with you, and I just, I don't know if that's something that you and your team had talked about, about doing more of that and feeling like that you couldn't. This just, this feels to me like a bunch of townhouses with a little bit of that vertically-integrated put on top.
Mr. President, council member, yes, we did consider and looked at doing more after neighborhood meetings and meetings with staff. This is what it's become, especially as we've addressed, we've tried to address all of the concerns that our Windsong neighbors have. Again, we built all those homes, we have relationships with them, we want them to continue to like and love Biltmore as they live in our homes. And so as we work with them, building height was a huge concern for them. I believe that the vertically-integrated units, we could design 40 to 50 units on this CC zone as it is and apply for building permits and go. And we would probably benefit for more units, but we just, we don't feel that that's the best for our Windsong neighbors or for Meridian and the needs that Meridian House for houses. And so we did, we looked at lots of those options and feel that we're bringing the best...
For the question, Mr. President. Councilwoman Strader.
Did you guys consider, at least, I understand the transition to the neighbors, that makes sense to me, if you want to be respectful of your neighbors and, well, did you consider, you know, the middle units here, like E and F, creating those as vertically-integrated commercial as well? Granted, they're right on the open space, but I guess, yeah, I just want to understand if you considered expanding that component to get more commercial.
Mr. President, council member, we did that, that would end up having the commercial storefronts face the park, which, again, with where this is under five acres, the open space isn't required, but we would like it. We wanted the feel for the community. And so having townhomes and families and childrens to be able to surround that park, we felt was a better use than more commercial offices.
Or alternatively, perhaps a row, you know, flip it, right? So you could have a long strip of open green space facing the townhomes, and then you could have had a long strip of additional commercially, you know, integrated buildings facing the first set that you have. If you guys looked at that configuration, just to play devil's advocate, I think there'd be a way to get more green space and more vertically-integrated space. I'm, the reason I'm asking that question is, it does feel a little bit to me like we're giving up commercial and we're ending up with a development full of townhomes. And I do like the vertically-integrated commercial residential, like I love that idea. I think it's great. I think it solves a lot of issues we have in the city, because people aren't commuting everywhere to get to work. So I like, I love that aspect. I think that provides an amazing solution to a lot of the infrastructure issues that we're having in Meridian. You know, I understand being respectful of the neighborhood, I actually wish we had more, I think is where I'm at. You know, I understand leaving that row of townhomes, you know, kind of on the west side, but I am concerned we're giving up a lot of commercial, and I understand the access issues, don't get me wrong. Let me mull it over for a bit, thanks.
Alan, did you want to?
Mr. President, members of the council, point of a clarification, I think it was an honest statement, but the CC does not allow townhouses. CC allows multifamily. Under the present code, they could do a conditional use permit to the county, to the city, excuse me, to the planning commission to do multifamily. Now, it's a little trickier than that, because they would also have to do a development agreement on modification, so they'd have to come to you, but townhouses are not allowed in CC. Multifamilies, even if you did a development agreement modification, there would be some argument about whether or not they could do that. But multifamily, yes, but you still have to do a DA agreement.
Thank you, Alan. Councilman Pearl.
Thank you. So I'm a real estate broker, so I understand how all of this works from the development piece and the financing piece. So is there, because there's a commercial component and a residential component, does that prohibit owners from seeking residential mortgages to finance these? And is that a limitation that also is created from having, say, 25 of them versus 12 of them?
Mr. President, council member, I don't know all of the mortgage answers, but no. So as townhomes, these sell like a single-family residence. And so they're all individual townhomes, they're attached, but they're not multifamily. And Alan's clarification was a good one. We weren't coming to seeking to do multifamily apartments, because we want the individual townhomes, and so that they can be, I mean, single-family residences, they're just attached.
Mr. President, a follow-up.
Go ahead.
But if the bank is collateralizing the property and they see the condo plat included, because it would have to be, is that not then going to prohibit them from getting residential financing? And is platting that commercial space going to prohibit that?
Mr. President, council member, I don't believe it should, because the preliminary plat that we have has the 33 residential lots and then three commercial lots. On two of those commercial lots is where the vertically-integrated units will go. But in lots of plats, there's a mix of residential lots and commercial lots on the plat. And so I don't believe it should affect their ability to get financing for their town.
Council, any other questions? All right, thank you, Jeremy. Council, what's your pleasure on this? Now, I'll add my two cents here at the start. I'm very familiar with this property. A young lady I was dating back in high school lived out over in the section in Dairy Farm, and so I remember the house that existed had an artesian well pumping though, and I used to remember the guy's name, and it's been lost, but when that house was torn down, that property has been vacant for a very, very, very long time. And it is, it is infill, it is difficult to access, you have one access point. It's nice that the pathway is coming in, that will follow Five Mile and come across the road and come up farther. And so I see the difficulty, I mean, they're trying to meet our requirements for this site, and to do that, it's taking a bit of effort, and it's been a very good effort, I think. I just don't see having any intensive retail on that corner with that one access point. I would probably know how to get there from other parts of the subdivision to get to that point, but for people who see it and want to get there, you have one access point. And Linder Road carries a lot of traffic, that's going to be difficult to do, to do the left-hand turn. It's not impossible yet, but someday it might be. So I appreciate the effort to bring commercial to an area, but try to lower the intensity of it, and doing that in a way that fits the neighborhood. Windsong is fairly new development, that property, Stubble Fields had that forever and was tied up in issues and whatnot, so I appreciate that effort of trying to integrate it and make it fit, because a lot of times, you know, that's the hassle we have, is how do you make that fit with what's already there? And they've kind of eliminated that issue for us, but it is a matter, do we want this? Do we like that? What are the hurdles? I think our Planning and Zoning Commission tried to tackle that with the condo plats and making sure it's just not going to be pure residential and keeping it to the commercial. But, you know, it's up to us to decide, but I have no idea what would be there if we don't do this. So it's, that's my two cents on it.
Mr. President.
Councilman Pearl.
So all the time I've been planning and zoning commissioner and on council, I think this is the, at least the third application that I've seen on this piece. The one prior was like 95-unit multifamily that was denied, and the one before that was another multifamily with maybe a commercial pad that was denied. This is the best design that I've seen since I've seen presentations. It's a tough corner, because you have that walkway, and then you have the drain that goes in front of Bridge Tower, and so it really also limits the size of the usable space on there. So kudos to you designing it in a functional way, because I've seen some multiple different designs on this piece, and most of them weren't amazing, which is obviously why they didn't get approved. And I'm usually, you know, one of the first to say, "Hey, let's definitely not trade some commercial for residential." However, we have approved those office slash, like, they're really also business condos over there directly to the east. I think there may be, there's maybe four units per building, and there's four buildings, something like that. There were numerous residential applications for that corner. I think the applicant that, or the gentleman that owned that had tried to bring fourplexes like three times. So all of the, it seems like every... So all of the it seems like every single one of those corners has had multiple different groups that have come and presented options. And I'm glad to finally see that we're actually seeing some movement. And so because there is, so in my opinion, because there's a decent amount of of restaurants and retail on Linder and Fairview and Linder and McMillan and Linder and Chenden that we there's some pretty good access for owners in that area. Unlike Black Cat and 10 Mile that doesn't have several different major corners that have you know, neighborhood uses. So I am in favor of the design as it is. I I also love live work units. I just don't know. It's a tough market to get people to buy those. There I think they're harder to sell than they seem. They seem like a fantastic idea and that a lot of people would be interested in them, but I they're they're tougher to sell. So that's my thought. I I personally think this is the best that I've seen on this property and all the applications that I've heard.
President Hoagland. Sure.
Councilwoman Strater.
All right, I'll go for it. I, yeah, I think I've been convinced to be in favor of it. I definitely love it so much more than self storage. Really grateful that it's not self storage. I I think it it is very, this is the best case scenario the neighbors certainly could have wanted from a transition standpoint. So I appreciate that. I don't love that we're losing what I think could have been more commercial, but it sounds like this has been a real struggle for a long time. So I appreciate the creativity with the vertically integrated. I hope that it that it works and I that's an equity risk, and I hope you guys market it appropriately and make it happen. I think it could be really interesting. A lot of little cottage industries could come out of this. I think it could be really, really a cool thing. So yeah, if it's new, let's try something new. I think I'm in favor of it. Thanks.
Any further comments? Council, what's your desire?
President Hoagland.
Yes, Councilwoman Strater.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Councilwoman.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead and try to I'll go ahead and try to make a motion and we'll see where it takes us. After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H 2021-0102 as presented in the staff report for today's hearing date with the following modifications. We'll have it reflect the discussions about the condo plat that all of the buildings must be constructed or have building permits for construction. We'll change that prior to the CO as we discussed. And then in addition to that, I would like the DA agreement to reflect that the use will not be for drinking establishments. Second.
Of a motion and second of the motion. Is there a discussion? Hearing done. Mr. Clerk, we call roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater.
Aye.
Byrne.
Aye.
Pearl.
Aye.
Kavner. Hoagland.
Aye.
And I apologize, Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Thank you. All right, with that, we come to future meeting topics. Council, anything bring up there?
Yes. Thank you. Just one one item, I would love to see some follow up on our community development block grant program about staff coming back to us on how we could modify the way our program is set up in order to be able to finance or contribute forgivable loans to affordable housing projects. I feel like I'm I'm sensing that there could be some hurdles there in the way our program is organized and our requirements and also with the finance department. I think that they need to weigh in on that. And that 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 is it, except for one tiny thing. It's a tiny pet peeve, but I like Councilwoman Strater, if we could go with that, just for everybody on staff to know. We don't have to dance around with like councilperson or any any of that, but it's tiny, tiny thing, but.
Duly noted, Councilwoman Strater.
Thanks.
With that, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And we have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned.